All right. I took roll. You're all here. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda. Second.
Moved by Theresa, seconded by Terry. Question? Brian, we're ready for the vote. Seconded by Terry. All right, thank you. Terry, will you read the school district mission statement for us?
The Brookings School District prepares all learners to be confident, engaged citizens, empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world.
Thank you. This is a time for board members to... Sorry, Jason. Declare any items that might be conflict of interest on the agenda tonight. Dr. Willard, do we have any? Don't have any conflict of interest items tonight. And I don't believe we have any comments from the audience. And so I will breeze through number five as well. All right. Well, tonight, board members, you'll see that we have a pretty limited agenda because we have a big item on that agenda, which is the discussion and update on the Midary and Hillcrest facilities, including the project scope and the funding approval. Interwoven probably with that will be some discussion on school attendance boundaries and that procedure and policy. I did have a couple of questions from board members regarding board goals and superintendent goals. And just so we know that we are behind a month on getting those approved and taken care of, and so it is an item that we do need to take care of. But pressing would be some discussion on these facilities that needs to take place from all of our perspectives, but especially the facilities committee. We just need to have this discussion with all the board members present. So that kind of leads us into our goal of discussion on that tonight. And I believe I'm... Dr. Willard's gonna start us off.
Yeah, so I've been a handout of document, board members, that was created late this afternoon. Not the one that's attached. This one's giving a broader scope, and then we can get a little more narrow. And the reason it was created late this afternoon, our team just didn't have time to get it created earlier. And you'll look at this and say, well, why not? It was a busy day, as Mondays always are. But what this does is provide a sense of inventory of classrooms, particularly home rooms that we have in the district and in the proposal for our current design work that we're doing. And we have continued to meet in earnest with our facilities team. We haven't brought all the teachers back in for a while. I apologize. I'll send one more down.
One more.
If I didn't have enough, there you go.
Or two more.
Oh, two more. Okay. There we go. And we had a meeting last Thursday, and it got done rather late. But what we did is, and I'll just walk through this little table or chart that you see in front of you here as we go through. We took into account the maximum opportunity for flexibility for elementaries, thinking that it could be, and this is where the kind of weaving of the two topics this evening come together a little bit. If we stay with the PK3 design, or if we go PK5 design, which does go back to the master comprehensive facility plan back in 2016 and '17 that was adopted by the board. So we looked at the availability of all classrooms, which takes into account, just as it infers, every classroom in the building. And a classroom isn't defined as a small inter-instructional closet space. It's something that would function as a classroom space. So this is inclusive of technology rooms, art classrooms, special education classrooms, all the encore things, music classrooms, et cetera. And then we broke that down a little farther as we were discerning the inventory of classrooms. And that's where we arrived at the current homeroom structure. The homerooms are essentially where you have a classroom teacher assigned to that room with a group of students. And those student reference numbers go across to the other chart on the right-hand side of your page for those, if you're looking. That's the adopted class size targets. The first column is the ideal, and the other one is the acceptable range. And then we do have another column that could be added to that, which is talking about unacceptable or the range where we get to when we start looking at adding staff. So we looked at the need based on 285 learners. That's what you see at the top of the chart. And you'll notice the K, and you'll notice 13 plus 3. The plus 3 references the junior kindergarten program right now. Then you see 13, 13, and just carry that on down. So that's why you end up with 78 current need, plus 3 junior kindergarten for the three buildings that we have where we have junior kindergarten for 81 classrooms. Well, that takes us back over to the other chart then, where we have the proposed homerooms. And what you see that came out of the design team last Thursday afternoon, rather late, was designing with the intent of Hillcrest and Midary. The 26 represents what was in the draft plans that were presented earlier in the afternoon. And then at the end of the day, we arrived at 22. That's where the 22 is parenthetically laid out. The 22 classrooms represents 22 homerooms, not counting encores, not counting those things like special education and Title I and English language learners and music and technology, all those services that we provide in addition to our homeroom instruction, to arrive at a net inventory of proposed homerooms of 97. We didn't take time to go back through and count all the other classrooms. Our focus was really on understanding what the base was for our instructional needs and purposes, the 97, and then how that would then backward design to encompass and include all of those other elements that we were talking about. The encores, the technology, the Title I, the special education, English language learners, all those other functions that we provide and services we provide in the district. So when you look at it, you can start to see how the basis for the space needs for the proposed interface with the targeted classroom sizes, our classroom enrollment numbers. And by building and designing the schools with 22 classrooms each, 22 homerooms, not including those other rooms, it affords us the opportunity and the option to think about if we would through the process that we're by policy required to go through when we start thinking about attendance boundaries, if we would arrive at a solution that would suggest we go with four neighborhood schools versus the three and include Camelot. It gives us that flexibility. And it's not overbuilding, which was something that the facility committee spent a lot of time talking about. We didn't want to overbuild. It allows us to master plan some spaces for additional classrooms, as well as we've been working with our architects, particularly Steve Janstrom on the project. And it does allow for, again, that maximum flexibility when we think about what this entails. Now, I will put a subtitle to all of this, that this is not inclusive of an early childhood component. That is a separate conversation, a separate topic altogether. And that is something that, right now, when we're talking about early childhood or early learning spaces, you see an attachment that was working a little bit on some visioning that our team has done. We worked on that over the weekend and put together some information for the board to think about. And where that becomes contextual then is later on this week, there's going to be some further conversations with community partners, talking about how we all work together around a shared solution. And that's referenced in that document. But before we dive into that document, I'm gonna defer Wes and Kelly anything more that you want to add about this concept, I guess, as you're thinking about that. One of the things that is inclusive in all of this is maintaining a couple of key tenants. One of those is the teaming concept. We have said that the space will allow for teaming and will be designed for teams, multi-age teams, which is consistent with the work that we're working on relative to the competency-based pathway that we're talking about. So there's that element. Each of those teams has a shared space for working and doing work together, some of the collab lab things. If you've been in those elementary schools and have had experience that, that affords that opportunity. And it is similar in design to what we have at the Mickelson Middle School. So teaming, it was one of the key tenants going forward. Flexibility. Flexibility is one of those tenants that we have embraced. And when we talk about that, we're talking about how the furnishings will occupy the space and allow for movement of learners from one classroom to another. So really embracing that concept of flexibility. Lighting is another important topic. If you recall in the presentation that was going around our community as we were presenting the bond discussion, we really emphasized the importance of integrating natural light into the buildings. And in the work that's been done thus far, every classroom, every homeroom classroom would have natural light in the classroom. So that was very important, has continued to be very important. And at the end of the day, we're going to work really hard to ensure that we have our teachers embrace this concept through their input. Like I said, they were very active early on. We've had them step away for a couple of reasons. One, it's very hard to find subs. And number two, we took all their input and kind of distilled it down. And I know our building principals who are present this evening, Mr. Gurenhagen and Mrs. Smith, have worked very hard to ensure that staff have had ample opportunity to provide input. So again, those are some of the key tenants that have been guiding this discussion when we think about the design and the layout and the organization of the classrooms and the schools, and thinking about how that all works together to provide us a couple of buildings that we're going to be extremely proud of for, obviously, decades to come. So again, I don't know if there's anything more that Kelly, Wes, you wanted to add or comment on.
I would just say the work of the group the last time... Clint, did you bring any plans for them to browse that?
I did not. I did not.
I can share mine. The work of the group the last time really centered on the basis that, obviously, the project came in over budget. And so as we're thinking about this holistic view, do we have an idea of all the inventory of the classrooms in our entire district? And would the plan allow for the kids to be basically covered with a homeroom somewhere in the Brookings community through that K5 space? And just ensuring that we're building, we're not overbuilding because of the current population that is at Hillcrest and Midary. Through that, we actually were able to reduce the classrooms in that original plan from 97 down to, what was that then, Clint? 85? 85, I believe? 89, I'm sorry. 23, 22, 22, 22. And so talking about just making sure that we're not building spaces that we then won't have enough students to fill into those spaces. And so that's where that discussion basis came from. And I think what we decided by the end of that discussion was our current plan, and we're just talking again about JK through 5 or JK through 3. Our current plan will work wonderfully for a JK3 school. And our current plan will work wonderfully for a JK5 school. It will cover both bases as we plan for the growth modeling. And again, just making sure that we weren't overspending and overbuilding classroom spaces that wouldn't be filled right away. Wes, do you want to talk about the financial kind of piece of that or other question? And then I want board members to ask a lot of questions tonight as we work through that.
Well, to keep the eye on the road relative to the finances, you have to start with square footage. And as we know, costs have increased from... Now, we're talking 12 months ago when we started landing on some numbers relative to the cost per square foot. Those numbers have certainly increased. So anytime we were looking at adding space for this or whatever else, and we've gotten input from our principals, and of course, Dr. Willard, and the special services areas. And so mindful of that, we feel comfortable that the numbers that Kelly has shared with us relative to classrooms are going to be very, very supportive of what we want to do educational-wise. And we aren't adding, we aren't billing more than we need, although we are using numbers, if you recall, that we looked at. Two new board members weren't on the board at that time. But we had a projection of where we'll be in 10 and 20 years, conservative projections in terms of enrollments. And so we have to take that in consideration. And of course, then, I'm gonna say this probably for the fifth time, we're still trying to keep the classroom's size in that 970 plus or minus square footage per classroom, which we've been holding on to for dear life, if you might say that.
I think they're 982, I believe.
To make sure that we don't start cutting where, at the end, we lose our flexibility to the classrooms, back to what Dr. Willard has said. So from a financial standpoint, we've got resources. One, we've got the bond issue. Two, we've got cash that we have in capital outlay that we've basically deliberately have been trying to hold on to for flexible resources. And the third is that we can issue bonds supported by capital outlay to augment and make sure that we can finance the two schools. Our commitment to this community is to build two schools, and we're gonna get it done. And it may mean that we're going to have to take capital outlay resources to support a bonds that are what's known as capital outlay certificates. We'll go into the history of that, but that's doesn't... Those two resources, capital outlay cash and other cash we may use, and the capital outlay certificates, the taxpayers are already paying that in their current assessments. Already paying that with their current tax structure. So that's... I'm gonna leave it at that. We may have questions down the road. And if we've got a clarification at some point in time, if board members need clarification, we certainly can do that. But this kind of gives us an overarching view of our financial plan that we've been working on, Mr. Luters, Dr. Willard and I have been working on. And what day was this? Friday, I guess? Theresa was in on the call that we had, trying to go through these numbers as best we could to clarify, to make sure we have a structured financial plan that'll get us to where we need to be. Pay for two schools, period. Thank you.
I'm sure there's lots of questions.
If I may, I'll make one more comment. And I should have made this at the beginning as well, when we talk about priorities, just because I know that this was a pretty important factor when we started talking about the bond and talking one school versus two schools. And that word is parity and equity. And what made me think of that was Wes's comment, relative to the classroom spaces, making certain that there is a level of continuity from our newest school, Dakota Prairie Elementary, to the other schools. Because again, those functions shouldn't be defined by your street address or anything like that, that those experiences should be shared regardless of which attendance center you go to or which school you go to. So when we talk about parity, equity, we're talking about things relative to the classroom sizes. We're talking about the services that we provide, whether it's the English language learner services, the technology opportunities. We're talking about the gymnasium spaces and the incorporation of those gym spaces and what can happen in those gymnasiums as well. So again, parity and equity continues to be one of those guiding tenants as well as we're thinking about what we're doing. And it looks like we had to queue on some plans, so we can certainly pass these around, board members.
Other thing I would just add is, and I know this early childhood document's attached, when we're talking about that, we're talking different ancillary funding source that we will have to look for, find, figure out, fund from that. And so really, I would like to start the conversation based on that pre-K3 model, and then we can dig into the early childhood stuff after that, if that works for board members. I can just share that right... I think right now we're... Oh, I don't have it updated. Do you know the total square footage right now? Clint, did you get updated plans from the architecture?
Yes, I can give that to you. Just give me about two minutes or maybe less. Brian might have it. We received an update over the weekend from Pierce from Hausmann, Hausmann Construction, as well as Steve Janstrom. So here are the latest numbers that we have. Again, just fresh hot off the press. So our new construction, I'm gonna look at Brian's computer, I apologize. All new construction at Hillcrest, which we know right now is 96,800 square feet. A portion of that, approximately 8,300 square feet, is what is designated as the Early Childhood Education Center. So in aggregate total square footage, 96,800. At the Midary Elementary School, as you may recall, when we talked in the bond presentation, we talked about renovating a portion of the school and leaving that there. We had envisioned that that would be as much as 14,000 square feet. What our architects have identified as renovated space is 1,080, or 10,800 square feet of renovation space. The new construction, in addition to the renovation space, is 9,020, 90,200 square feet. And inclusive in that total square footage, there is 7,200, 72,000, 7,200 square feet designated for early childhood education space. Right now, the projected cost per square foot is, for the new construction, $340 per square foot. Obviously, there's a lot of different variables that impact what that cost is. The renovation cost per square foot is $175 per square foot. And the early childhood breakout area is $327 per square foot. The renovation space, the reason that that is considerably lower relative to the new construction costs, is that is big, vast, open space. One of the things that is part of the discussion is taking this room that we're meeting in right now and more centralizing it in the district, placing it at Midary because they have a big lobby area there. That would give some flexibility for this room during the day, because I know that there's some ongoing... Well, case in point, I mean, book fairs and everything else that happen and giving the opportunity to talk about some of these things. So again, we have some things laid out here for us as we start looking at our numbers and how we get there. I think we're, as Wes said, we are on a good path to get there.
And board members, I know you just got all of this. And so if we need to take a couple minutes for everybody to just breathe and review, that is totally something that we can do. You can ask whatever you want. I'm a teacher. I'm really good at wait time, so I don't mind if you take time to reflect on...
Pastor, I'm good at silence.
Totally. We can do this.
Just looking at the Hillcrest, so where are we at with the city? I mean, before we jump into all this, just to know where we're kinda at.
Yeah, great question. And one of the discussion things or topics has been, knowing that our goal was to occupy the existing Hillcrest School, going back to what you just asked, Terry, and constructing at the same time simultaneously the new school. And on the preliminary plan, you'll see a dashed line. The dashed line represents the existing footprint of the Hillcrest School. If you look carefully on these, again, proposed draft plans, and just so everybody knows, we're cautious about disseminating these widely because we don't want to compromise school safety or security. So everybody's clear. But if you look at the line, there's a bus drop-off line, you'll notice. If you follow that line across the document, and you'll notice that it takes a sharp turn to the south and then goes back to the east. That area just above that line is what is considered to be on City Plans Lot N, as in Nancy. Lot N, in our conversations, has, as I've been visiting with the city administrator, and our team has met with their team on a couple of occasions. They are interested in, for certain, leasing and longer-term, looking for options or opportunities to potentially do an intergovernmental exchange of land with the school district. And you'll notice that these new derived plans do not encroach on some pretty important elements for the city. A couple of those elements are, obviously, the parkland itself. That's something that when we had early on conversations, there was concerns about encroaching too much and taking up what is designated as park area in the city. Another element that's really important is, because they get used quite frequently, are the shelters, the three shelters as you look right across, right from the gymnasium space. This would not encroach on those three shelters that exist today. So the service road would serve the needs for pickup and drop-off of food for lunch. There would not be a prep kitchen in Hillcrest. It would be a service kitchen. So that area would have quite a bit of traffic, obviously, throughout the day as we pick up and drop off things related to the food service. And then that also becomes an area and opportunity for delivery of chemicals, cleaning materials, equipment, those types of things. So again, right now, the latest conversations that I've had with the city administrator and our team with their team is that we should plan accordingly to go forward as you see it laid out here today.
On this plan, does any of the new building overlap the old building?
So if you look real carefully, you'll notice that there is a slight overlap, I believe, maybe just very slight, where the early childhood center is. But the goal was to keep that offset. It's really close, if at all, but the goal was to offset that with at least 20-foot space so that the construction could be done, so everything could be opened simultaneously. Early on, there was a further encroachment on the existing footprint, which was really concerning to us because then we would disrupt existing operations and the playground. That really minimizes that. So if it does, it's very, very little, if any at all. And I think, Kelly, you're right. I don't think it does.
I don't remember. I don't think there is any encroachment at the Hillcrest site at all.
So you can build the new school and not be... The old school's all there till the new school's ready and then the old school goes down?
Correct. Correct. And when you look at the Madera plans, you'll notice that the dashed line represents the footprint again, and you will notice that that does exist where the new pickup and drop-off sites are. We have had assurances, as we've talked with the architects as well as the construction manager, that it is feasible to complete the construction, finalize the demo, and get the new elements for the pickup and drop-off and parking put in place. If for some reason we can't, we will work with the city and the construction manager for some temporary components, but again, we've had assurances that that is achievable. So that's how we're proceeding with the plan. And the intent is then that where the existing footprint is, you would enter off of Fifth Street into the parking lot, and then from the east side of the school, walk in the front entrance.
As we were just kind of reporting out some details, I was looking at our initial plans and kind of where we're at now, but a couple just things to point out as we've designed with the teachers. They, all of the spaces, like Dr. Willard says, include a learning center. So that's that collaborative workspace based on the competency-based models that we're working on. Also, great ideas from teachers and from some school visits about those lockers. If you kind of see in those sections are in sort of a vestibule windowed area, so can kind of keep the mess out of the classrooms. Yep. But it does also allow for a classroom space with those walls for future. So if we ever needed to add a space there, we could do some renovation with lockers and those sorts of ideas. Other thing is that all the classrooms have windows in them, which is really cool, and will have light in that learning center with some high windows as well. And then close location for all services that students might go to for OTPT resource. Heather has been very involved in the plans and the flow of the students in and out of those spaces, ELL spaces. You can see both of those teams can enter those spaces from one way. So some really cool things and great work by the team as they've put together those plans.
And I will share that these plans that you're looking at were prior to the discussion on the number of classrooms that we needed. So these will be modified again, but at least it gives you a sense conceptually of what has been formulating and how it's coming together.
Basically, all those dashed lines that you see around the outside, those are the ones that we were able to eliminate based on the overall space model from the district. Most of them, not all of them.
So this whole page is just, these would be the mirror image of that, right? On Madera?
Yeah. That's what we've called a neighborhood as we've worked in the facilities team. And so the principals and the teachers have...
Two of these, two neighborhoods.
Yep, two neighborhoods. And then that neighborhood is the same at Madera and Hillcrest. So that feeling will be the same throughout the schools and that design of a neighborhood. The team, the teachers and the principals have worked really hard in what they think about that neighborhood and how that flows. It started as 4,000 square feet, so it's going to be kind of, we've had to reduce that quite a bit too over time. But it started really, really dreamy.
I would, I mean, I think the ideas of the teaming, the flexibility, the lighting, those are three important factors that we talked about right from the start. And I think that's definitely been considered as you put together these plans. I'm looking at Madera and Hillcrest, it does seem that the playground area at Madera is a lot smaller. Is that just in my vision of this? Because we've got, at Hillcrest, there's two paved playground areas plus the green playground open space that will be available once Hillcrest, the old Hillcrest is removed. But at, what's our, in looking at Madera, where's, is there a green play space there? Maybe Mr. Greenhagen can...
Yeah, what's deceiving about this, Deb, is that entire block is ours.
We own that, yeah. But if we do a trade with the city, is that a possibility that some of that's going to go or no?
No, that's not...
Because that was my question. We probably should have identified that there's going to be a green space there too. Because I think that's really important too when we look at what we want to make available to our learners. We want a green space.
Absolutely.
So, okay, that answers that question.
And in fact, even looking down on the south part, you'll notice those trees and shrubbery there. There's even been talk of adding, and I'll let you figure out who's the principal, which building, as soon as I say, with a, there might be a running path that's encouraged to be put through there. I'll let you figure out who suggested that.
We have talked a lot about outdoor spaces and make sure...
Well, and that would also be available to the community as well because, you know, so that's another plus. I, you know, I would put that in there.
And the other thing that's been talked about, and this starts to take the plan a little bit larger too, when we start talking about those different pathways and whatnot, and I know Kelly's been advocating really hard that we think about various elements of pickup and drop-off and creating walkable places to and from school. So we're incorporating nature and all those elements too. And I think that's something that we're going to continue to focus on as we go forward, not to put words in Kelly's mouth, but I think she's been...
I just connected the architects with Dr. Jessica Mendering, and so they've, she sent them some research-based articles on safe pathways to school and just reducing some traffic patterns, but also getting our children some more activity throughout the day and different things.
Well, just the whole idea of appreciation for nature and the environment, I think that's extremely important. And, you know, I know we had a few years ago a presentation from Dakota Prairie about an outdoor classroom, you know, so we would have spaces at these places too where we could incorporate some of that at a later date. But it's also important as a consideration in terms of how we utilize the space.
I would like to just comment on that if I can because what has been discussed in some of those spaces between the neighborhoods is just that, that there would be some outdoor learning elements that are inclusive. A couple of us did take a tour of the Jefferson High School, and Jefferson has some of those spaces outside their high school where there's some flowers and some sitting areas. Now, one of the things that we'll be looking at, obviously though, is low maintenance because we don't have a real robust buildings and grounds department. We're pretty limited on our resources there. So we'd have low maintenance but impactful and engaging spaces for our learners.
So to clarify, Jefferson High School is the new high school in Sioux Falls, not Jefferson, South Dakota. So for our listing partners here.
We didn't go on a trip.
I just want to say that also safety and the word safety has come up several times. It's not just about how, you know, pathways or whatever, but it's how the flow of traffic, the flow of our vehicles, our bus drop-off, and as you mentioned, the constant flow of vehicles servicing, service vehicles that go back and forth. That's the first thing I want to say. The second thing is, we use the word classrooms and learning studios interchangeable. So every document people may look at and other references that might come to, come to, come up, they're going to see learning studios. Well, that's, it's kind of tougher for this guy to make the bridge between, between the road and the pathway, whatever, some old terminology, new terminology. I've been using classrooms all along, they haven't stopped me yet.
No, no.
And I'm going to keep using it, but learning studios, and if you think about it, it's a nice term to use and certainly reflective of what we're all about. And then I want to say that we had this room of participants early on in early July, of teachers, administrators, principals, gathered to try to work through some of these challenges of how, of the space to meet the needs of our district in the building of these facilities. And so sometimes it wasn't so much what got into the plan about what we said, the group said, we don't need to have or we can, we can serve the district other ways. So, you know, if you would have just left things to be, we probably had, we probably would have had more square footage, but we had good input from our teachers who, you know, after school started, we had, we continued to have meetings, they forfeited their time to be with us. And of course, the principals were at every meeting providing input to us. So these are important steps that we had, that the group had to rely on as far as input that I, for one, I'm sure Kelly appreciated the candor that we had of input of yes, no, maybe, or it won't work, it will work, and let's study, or let's study it some more and come back at the next meeting. Our architects were very valuable in terms of guiding us because they've done schools, many more schools than any of us have. And so with that, I just want to, I just want to mention that for the benefit of our viewing public, that we've had a lot of input. It wasn't just those seats are on this table in the past four months, and we will continue to have because there's lots of decisions to make yet or to confirm as we go forward. Thank you for letting me give you my speech.
I do have another question. This is probably for Wes and Teresa in the finance committee. When you mentioned the finances, Wes, I know when you originally developed the plan, we talked about the bond and capital outline. And then you mentioned tonight, a third source of income can be bonds relative to capital outline. Can you explain that a little bit? I don't, I can't say I'm familiar with that and what that would mean.
I think I'm answering your question by saying that we, that the district has used and other districts have used a bond sales, and their debt is serviced, the annual payment, interest and principal is serviced, serviced or paid for, another word, by the Fund, Capital Outlay Fund, which is a levy that's allowed by the legislature, the statute of so much per thousand that is limited by state law. And that flow of funds is used for education material. I'm sure those books are using it, operate or purchase buses, renovate buildings, keep our parking lots up. Brian probably could give us another 10 items, just bang, bang, of how we use our capital outlay. Maintenance repair buildings, obviously, replacing the furnaces and maintenance. But we are using currently capital outlay to service the debt of the nearly $24 million that was put into Mickelson Middle School. The Camelot Edition, I think, was capital outlay, if I recall. There's, but some of these bonds mature and they're paid off. And so three years ago at a board meeting, I was privileged to be able to give my comments about capital outlay, and I said we could probably afford 12 to 15 million. That was at that point in time. We're looking at that number, probably even as much as 20 million to make this thing all work. But the taxpayers are already paying that. We will have to probably do a little push, make some choices. Now, the other opportunity we have that we need to create really is the use of cash. That means defer something, not use it today so that we can make the whole project work because we've been planning for the expenditure we need to do to pay for aggressive progress payments during the construction period, cash from the capital, which we have, do have some for availability. So that's the three sources. Plus the bond issue, which is...
Thank you for explaining.
It's capital outlay certificates. And the other part that, we did have funds left over because I know this question's come up on a couple of occasions from the middle school project, and we have held on to those with the intent that those are funds that help pay for the furnishings fixtures and some of those pieces of equipment because certainly staff will carry over some of the things that are newer acquisitions in their classrooms. But we also know that you build new schools and the function of certain pieces of furnishing and fixtures change, so we will utilize those funds to cover those expenditures.
And I might add, we're kind of treating those funds, that fund, as pretty much sacred, not to infringe upon that for the construction because we know the days come when we're going to have to put equipment into the classroom and throughout the building.
Just so the board knows, there may be some supplements to the S R funding, any anticipated amounts that we'll have left over from staff, not positions not being filled. We'll use that to purchase equipment for the two elementaries as well, whether it's scrubbers, vacuum cleaners, et cetera.
I have a question about the design of the building. So we have our neighborhoods at one end, and then are the, like, the music and art rooms and all that down toward the gymnasium end of this? And is there...
If you go to that second page of each of the plans, right above, so like at Madera, you can see guidance and tech, media, art, and then the special education wing.
Okay, I need to...
It's little, I know. I'm sorry. We can choose some bigger ones, but yes. Yeah, right above those neighborhoods. So yeah, same kind of concept about the travel to those classes.
Okay. All right, got it.
I just looked at Madera. And then Hillcrest, they'll travel west out of those neighborhoods, and then those specials It is exciting.
Yes, I'd really just put out there, I envision, I envision this as being a pre-K3 situation. And I know this K5 has come up, but I really think that our district is doing well with the K3 schools and then Camelot intermediate. And I would, I would just mention, I really envision these two new building projects. I think we almost have been modeling them off of Dakota Prairie and wanting things to be equitable, and I just feel that that's really where our district should be. So that out there.
I would just like to again thank you for all of your work. For those of you there on the facilities committee, I know that's a lot of work, and a special thank you to our principals for the work that they have done so far because I know that's above and beyond what you have to do every day at our schools. So just a big thank you to all of you, board members and principals for your work and administrators for your work.
Dr. Willard, do you see us diving into the K5 conversation more? Is that something you would like some more feedback? I know Teresa commented on that, and I'm willing and happy to make continued comments on that. Like we just had shared, the plans are flexible for both situations. From a timeline perspective, I guess I didn't really say that, and don't hold us to these exact timelines and dates because there's, I don't know, it's four pages of Excel documents that they've shared with a sequence of events. But right now, they do show us taking or being able to occupy the building with students on Monday, August 26, 2024. And so I know that work will affect our calendar committee and some of the things that we'll have to be thinking about from a school year perspective for those buildings. I don't, I haven't heard a lot of projects finishing right on that exact timeframe, so it might be something that we just need to be cognizant and aware of. And then Teresa, to your point, obviously gives us time as we reflect this, but want to be communicating to our teachers and our staff and our families those situations. So I didn't let you answer my question, I just made an additional comment. But yeah, if you want us to dig into that a little bit more, we're happy to do that.
Why don't, why don't we do that in the next agenda item when we're talking about the boundaries? Because I think that's probably a little more appropriate there than where we're at right now. I think maybe we want to touch on the early childhood element next, and then we can transition to the next agenda item.
That works fine.
I have one other quick question. Oh, I'm sorry, Teri. Demolition of Hillcrest, is that included in our cost analysis?
Yep, everything, demolition of both spaces are included.
Everybody's aware of that, the public's aware of that.
But there could be a funding opportunity there to sell a brick because I know those bricks are very valuable.
Or bring a hammer. Actually, the school...
No, no! We're going to send the work with coffee.
That was a joke.
I have a brick from Canton High School because when they destroyed this school, that's what we did, they sold them. Someone actually did a painting on... Someone actually did a painting on there that had the school rendition of the old school and the dates, and I love that, I have that. So that is a possibility.
Joking aside, we were able to see some exterior images of both Hillcrest and Midary, and the committee was, I think, smiling and pretty excited about that. Hillcrest, I, I guess a comment that was made was it looks like Hillcrest still. And then Midary has a great tie to the high school and that neighborhood, and just looks like it fits right in that neighborhood. And so that was some exciting preliminary images that we saw of both of those spaces.
I just had a question, just as we move forward with the conversations, K5, K3, we will be hearing from families, because I know for a lot of families that transportation is not, neighborhood schools do mean a lot to families that have K through five, that they only have to send. We will be hearing from all families in, often overlook those.
Yeah, and like I said, we will get a little more into that when we get to the next agenda item, but that's a great observation.
So do you want to transition us to the early childhood conversation? We haven't had a chance to review this memo, I guess, so I, I don't know how much discussion is there, but I.
No, and I agree, and, and we just wanted it out there because I know that we have to, we have to think about a lot of different variables and considerations when we're talking about the early childhood spaces. And, and when we look at what was, again, starting with the why, why did we start this conversation in the first place? Well, if we go back to what happened on actually November 19th, 2021, the House of Representatives at the U.S. level passed what was called the Build Back Better Act. And part of that was encouraging, if you recall, the funding and support for early childhood education. It was going to be free early childhood education that was supported and funded. And we were in the throes of determining the scope of our building project at that time. And as, as the board deliberated the concept, there was also a couple other elements that were out there, and I made hard copies, board members, if you wanted them this evening, these are attached for you as well. The 2020 BEDC Brookings County Child Care Survey, these were results from May of 2020.
Yeah, that's pre-COVID information.
And then also the First Children's Finance, which is a Brookings County Child Care Supply Plan, which was March of '22. Both of these were things that, that all kind of culminated together when we said, yeah, we should look at having a component of early childhood education as part of the bond discussion, because we knew that it had passed out of the House at the federal level, and it sounded like there might be some, some momentum going forward with the Senate. We know that that did not come to fruition, but nonetheless, we know that, and this is reiterated in the statement that you see there, we know that there certainly is value in strong early childhood education programming. And when you look at it, there are some key elements that you can look at relative to this, and, and the disclaimer that you'll see on this is that some of this was lifted conceptually from Minnesota. And the reason that some of this conceptually was lifted from Minnesota, experience is a great teacher, especially if it's somebody else's experience. Minnesota has a very robust early childhood education program. And when we start looking at functional elements of early childhood education, we know that we have needs with our families, we hear about that all the time, that's validated in these two documents. We also know that this isn't a space in a community like Brookings that we would occupy on our own, and that's something we're very sensitive to. We have great partnerships and incredible relationships with the Boys and Girls Club. We have phenomenal partnerships and relationships with SDSU. We have great relationships and partnerships with other private providers in the community. And we need to just think mindfully about how all of those elements work together. As such, there've been, there's been one meeting and another one's coming up, bringing different partners to the table to talk about how these things interface. Plus, there is an early learning or early childhood coalition that's been meeting. Kelly's been very actively involved in that. I've been able to attend a few of the meetings, just talking about how all these various pieces fit together to create this tapestry of, of a rich, robust childhood experience for our youngest learners in those formative stages in our community. And, and again, it, it's not an argument on the value of early childhood education. I don't think anybody's having that argument. I think it's more of a discussion on how do we, how do we all work together to, to make this dream a reality in our community? And what, what this memo attached here is just taking some of the input and thinking from a variety of different people, ranging from central office principals, looking as well at some financial aspects, just to, just to start some conversation about what could this look like? And, and is it full day? Is it half-day programs? Is it, is it something that is central to three-year-olds, four-year-olds? As, as was discussed earlier, we already incorporated into the, into the draft plans two junior kindergarten classrooms, because we know that that junior kindergarten need is something that we've heard is growing. We think about how we partner with Head Start, for example, as well, and our, we had the presentation at our last school board meeting related to early childhood special education. And when I've talked to some of our educators there, as well as Heather Asmussen, our Director of Special Services, the desire to more appropriately integrate some of our early childhood special education students with their age-alike peers, because they have limited opportunities to do that today. So again, there, there are many components on the table. I think we're all approaching this the right way with our eyes and minds and hearts open to find the very best solution for our community, and that's, that's the spirit I think everybody's approaching it at, just because we know that, again, this is, this is something that's very good for our children and equally for our families, and ultimately for our community as a whole. So that, that's really the context of why everything's put on the table, just for, for some discussion and, and knowing that, board members, we wanted you to be aware that there's this other conversation going on, so that we can report back and inform you on how the various partners are working together in the community to realize this, so.
I think the board's probably going to need some time to review everything that was sent. I'll just, and the team has heard me say this, as I do a, a first glance at the document, it has suggested half-day programming. That's something that I just, I worry about from an access perspective for families, and just thinking about, as we talk about this collaboration, how can we just be an access point if we decide to go down that? Teri, that's kind of something you brought up with the transportation is also something to think about as well.
I think the benefit is, though, we have a plan that includes space for that, and gives us time to work through a collaborative agreement with our community partners. So I think from that perspective, we're in a good shape.
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely need to work with programs that are existing and see what gaps need to get filled, or how we can add to that, not take away from it, work together. And especially if, if there's a program out there and they want to get bigger, but they need space, and then we can say, well, we have the space. I think that's what we really need to work toward in this adventure.
One thing I was thinking about, as well, was shared with me, just about the varying reading levels as it comes to our first grade and second grade classrooms. I don't know if something that the Performance Oversight Committee would want to take on is some of that reading data with Michelle, and just kind of looking at, could we serve, or could we help? This is just off, this is off my head, this is not, but I just have heard too, there's about a million-word gap for children that are in a high-quality early childhood environment or high-quality home where books are being read all the time and those sorts of situations. And so when that gap isn't met, then those are things that our, our elementary teachers. So I don't know if some of that reading data could be something that could help us design around this.
We have a reading.
Great.
So talk about that.
It's a thought. Just a thought for someone else to work on.
Yeah, just, just real quick, the word gap, you understated, Kelly, because by three years of age, a 30 million-word gap between children from some of the more affluent to some of our less affluent families, and, and much of that is driven by opportunity and access.
If the board is interested, I think some of you have seen these, but some work that, from the Brookings County Child Care Supply Plan, two documentaries that I have watched and have become, you know, really just something that I've thought has been so wonderful, is called No Small Matter. You can find that. And then the second is Starting at Zero. And those are just maybe board members, two things as you think about these items that you might want to review. They're, I think they're about an hour each, maybe less. Am I hearing from the board, if we can kind of figure out financing, we like the idea of having the space built, and we want really strategic work around the design of programming? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is my, how I would agree with that, I would get that statement.
Fish? No? Yeah?
I have a lot of questions about the funding. I mean, so we get it built.
Yeah.
Figure that out, but then there's a big commitment to running it and operating it, and that's, that's the quest, that's the million-dollar question, or half a million-dollar.
Multi-million dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's just, I, I'm kind of a concrete thinker, how are we going to do it? Where's the?
We're going to hope for a major change in our state fund. No, I'm, really?
Continue to advocate for funding.
Yes. Additional questions or discussion in that area tonight? Okay, moving us on to item 6.2, discussion on.
Say one thing, so where are we going from here, then? Are we going to, are there going to be more meetings with other early childhood community members and with other possible funding sources? Or what's the next, where are we leaving this right now?
I'll, I'll interject my perspective. I believe our next step is continuing what has started, which is, which is this discussion with other partners in the community. We, we had, like I said before, one opportunity to do some of that work. We were tasked with coming back to the table with a little more idea of where this takes our community five, 10, 15 years down the road. And that meeting is going to occur this week, later on this week. And, and from there, I think it's an opportunity to reconsider how the operational aspect will work, and equally where we go forward with the, with the design components, knowing that we've got the classroom spaces, and obviously the budget is a big part of that and how all that weaves together. So I don't have a ton of answers for you right now, Teresa, but I will say that that's, that's a step forward, that's how we're going to proceed.
And so does this then become part of our strategic plan, early childhood education? Or how does that fit in with, I mean, it's a five-year strategic plan, we're thinking, does this become part of that, or is this just still a separate entity? Or what?
So, so I think when we think about strategic plans, many strategic plans end up being laundry lists of to-do, check, to-do, check, to-do, check. I don't envision our strategic plan is going to be that. I think our strategic plan is going to be more about the results that we're ultimately achieving to see and realize. And if some of our metrics that come out of our strategic plan include reading levels of, of elementary students, then this absolutely fits with that vision and that, those metrics and those goals. So I really believe that as, as that starts to get a little more detailed, and I have no idea where it's at right now, other than the focus groups have happened and a survey is being created, and we'll get that data and share it. But I think that there is, there certainly is a place for our school district to have this conversation. The impact is just too great.
I'm interested to see what came out of those sessions and her feedback when she gets that. Okay, so moving on to 6.2, discussion on school attendance, boundaries, and procedures.
So board members, you'll notice that we do have the policy on school board attendance boundaries attached for you to look at. As we were reviewing this policy recently in the district office, we went back and looked at the last time this policy had been revisited by the board, and the last time was, I believe, January of '18, which.
March.
March of '18, excuse me. So it, it seems like just yesterday in some regards, but it seems like a long time ago in others. And as you look at the policy, which is attached, so you have a chance to review that, you will notice that based upon the action of the board, we would revisit this every five years. And, and it's not just revisiting the policy, but actually revisiting our attendance boundaries. And you'll notice the attendance boundaries are attached as part of that policy discussion. So where are we at? What's going on? And what do I envision happening over the next weeks and months to come? Certainly, we want to honor the policy and the requirement to follow, follow through on the policy. I have reached out to a couple of individuals that have provided us data for this policy review. We have the opportunity to partner again with Mary O'Neill, as well as representatives from the city. Both of them have GIS resources and experience that we'll be able to draw from, and we'll be able to, for lack of a better term, heat map concentrations of, of students and learners in various areas of our community, and then work to project over the next five years what that means for attendance in those various school centers. We don't have to look very far. In fact, we could all walk out and take a look out this door and realize what's going on in this attendance boundary. The Dakota Prairie attendance boundary is becoming very full, and it's even to the point where this room where we're meeting in, I've been asked if this would become, become a room available for a classroom at some point in time, because again, the concerns about space. So it is very timely that we're talking about this. I think it's appropriate. We continue to see, albeit, some modest growth in our community. Like Brian and I were visiting earlier today, I believe it looks like we're going to add approximately 30 or 35 students to our student count this year, and, and that's just, again, a positive outcome for us. So I would envision that as we move forward, now getting to the discussion about, is it K3, is it K5? I think we could ask our experts that we're going to ask for assistance to model both options. And I think there's some wisdom in doing that, frankly, board members, and that would And I think there's some wisdom in doing that, frankly, Board members, and that would be my recommendation. Because if you look at what's happening in the, if you scroll down, you actually look at the attendance boundaries, you can see how constrained the Madera attendance boundary is. And it begs the question, are we going to draw the northern boundary of Madera farther south, and shift the southern boundary of Madera farther south, and effectively have the attendance boundary, the southern border of the Hillcrest attendance boundary, effectively be the front door of Madera Elementary School? That's really a tough conversation. And I think there's other ways that we could slice the pie. You could go attendance boundaries north and south. Well, that becomes really interesting, too, when you start thinking about where you draw those lines and how that interfaces. But I think when we look at our policy, if we work with those individuals that have that GIS experience and model what we do, I think it's going to give us some different options. And I would also be remiss if I didn't point to Aurora, because we know Aurora has had a considerable amount of growth. I know they have, just from talking to some different leaders over at Aurora, there's a little bit of tempering right now, what's going on, because they're sorting through some of the city infrastructure relative to the growth and development of Aurora. But that's going to happen. I really believe that that's going to happen. So, we want to be mindful of all these factors that weigh in on this attendance boundary.
How many students do we have from Aurora right now, Dr. Willard? Do you know, Brian? Forty? Forty?
I was going to say, close to the... Yeah, K-3, probably about 40, 45, yeah.
I mean, I just think this is such an important discussion, because I remember the city coming to talk to the school board a couple of years ago and telling us, the only growth is going to be to the south. There's not going to be growth to the north, because most of the property north of town is owned by South Dakota State University. So, that's not going to be available for housing. So, I just remember that discussion, and I'm assuming that's partly why Aurora is growing as well, because there's no space in Brookings. So, yeah, I think what you're saying, Dr. Willard, it would be great for us to hear from them. I certainly don't have the answers. And I think that it's a very important discussion, because we, yeah, you're right, we walk out the door and we can see all the construction that's going on to the south.
And I like the idea of having them give us both, the K-3 and the K-5. That would be very beneficial.
And one of the variables that adds into this discussion, too, that, again, just being mindful of our community. When you look at the Madera attendance boundary, we know that there's housing density there that doesn't necessarily exist in some of the other attendance boundaries. You also, Board members, saw earlier this year, an interesting statistic that showed our highest free and reduced lunch population was in the Hillcrest attendance boundary, closely followed by Madera. But that's also something that we weigh in this conversation, is how we create those parameters when we think about our distribution within our community. So, again, weighing all those factors is going to be important.
And that goes to title funding, too. Can you just expand upon title funding, Dr. Willard?
Yeah, I can. So, that Title I funding is derived from our free and reduced lunch counts. And several years ago, when we opened Dakota Prairie, there were students that had been served by Title I services in both Madera and Hillcrest that found themselves in Dakota Prairie without any service or support. And it was simply because Dakota Prairie didn't qualify as a Title I school while Madera and Hillcrest did. So, our solution, because you cannot supplant, you can only supplement Title I funds, we utilized the general fund to hire a reading interventionist at each of the schools. And then, on top of those general-funded reading interventionists, we were able to provide Title I services at Madera and Hillcrest. Now, since that time, we have started to have Title I services in Dakota Prairie, but that's a school that's always on the edge, whether it will or whether it won't qualify. And there are a lot of different factors that play into that. Obviously, the, like I said, the free and reduced lunch is the biggest one. And as you look at the map, you may even start to wonder, well, why was that portion by Edgbrook Golf Course originally deemed to be an important part of the Madera attendance boundary? That was driven predominantly by transportation, because there was no connectivity or limited, well, I would say no connectivity, from that area of our community for walking to the Dakota Prairie attendance boundary. And that is an important factor when you think about the community that lives in that portion of our city. So, again, a lot of variables that we have to be mindful of. And again, I would just ask everybody, those that are here, those that are listening at home, to approach this conversation with an open mind and an open heart, because, again, it's with the intent to do what's very best for our community as a whole that we're going to approach this. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I know these can be emotionally charged conversations and challenging conversations, but I think if we all approach this with the spirit of we're doing what's very best for our learners, we'll find a solution. But I just wanted to let everybody know that this is a policy we have to address.
The information you were talking about, Dr. Willard, from Mary and others, when will that be available to the board? Ask that question. Thanks, Deb.
So, we are very infant stages. In fact, we don't have a meeting scheduled to start this process of discussion until, I want to say, like, the first, no, second week of November. That's the soonest that we were able to get everybody together. So, what I would envision is, first of all, ensuring, this meeting is to ensure that they are capable and have the capacity to do what we're going to ask them to do. Once we do that, I would envision coming to the board and asking for representatives from the board, and equally seeking some representation. I know we've had representatives from each of the buildings in the past. We've had representatives that have been both the secretaries. I know we have a former one in the audience. We have had principals. We've had our Director of Transportation Services. We've had our Director of Special Services. And then, we've had parent representatives from each of the parent teacher associations part of that group. So, again, we would come with a recommendation stating that this is the group that would serve as the steering committee for this work. But this first effort is really gauging the capabilities of, like I said, Mary, as well as the folks from the city, to help us with this. Once we have that assurance, then I'll come back with the next steps.
As I was preparing for the meeting, I went back and reviewed our initial services with Architecture Incorporated. And it does look like the first bullet was that they were to, this item shall include giving recommendations for district boundaries to better reflect the needed size for both Hillcrest and Madera. And so, I don't know if that is a major revisit of that, because the information provided from Brian Fields and their team, we do have that. So, maybe that's something, Dr. Willard, you could share with Board members.
Yeah, it should be included, because we paid for that service.
We paid for that service. And so, and if we're not happy with that, then maybe we need to revisit the ARC Inc. data on that component. And then, I'm all good with multiple sources, though, because I want to get this right. So, I think it's okay to continue with the other projects as well.
Right. And ARC Inc. doesn't know the community like our leaders and our people do.
Correct.
So, yes.
Correct. But just getting some additional data from them. The growth model that they did, that they used when planning our projection was a 1% for 10 years, and then a 1.5% for the second decade in the 20-year projection. And so, just comparing where we've been to all of that.
I think, didn't ARC Inc. also confer with Mary O'Neill for some numbers and some...
I didn't remember that, but maybe.
I remember that. I remember that, that...
She was never at any of them.
I remember Steve saying that she was, yeah, a good source.
We'll check that out.
Yep. She wasn't at any of our meetings that we met, and I never saw a presentation from her before.
I'd be better off not to comment, but I'm going to say a few things here that might be relevant, and that is, you know, you get into this and you think, well, it takes somebody wiser than I am to figure that out. That's why you rely on data. You rely on honoring some things, like natural boundaries. We've got a railroad track coming through town. We've got some streets that are probably more of a through street or more of a support system for transportation. And then, we've got density. We've got density in some areas of town that we drive by nearly every day, and we don't think that, hey, this is where we have a lot of families with school-aged children living in that, in those apartments that are dense, denser, denser housing units. So, I think, you know, at the end, we just want to have a system that we don't get everybody all shook up, because we're talking about it. There's a lot of decisions that have to be made, a lot of steps have to be made before you say, okay, this street is the boundary. And I've been through this, and it is not a, it is, it's a challenge, challenge. And, but, on the other hand, if you do it with, you know, listen to the patrons who have a concern, try to minimize the upsetting nature of where our children have as a, what school they belong, literally belong to, we can get through it. The whole title thing is an interesting thing, but at the end of the day, as a board, we're going to, you know, it's, you have to just sit back and say, okay, if these services are needed in whatever school it is, and we look at it, it's the right thing to do. And we'll have to just figure out the resources. Sometimes the resources, they're always a challenge, but it might be the pathway to get the boundary thing acceptable by the patrons. I might have talked around the subject a little bit.
That was great. Can you also...
How I feel.
Can you also share current enrollment numbers at all of our elementary schools with us, Dr. Willard, at some point? Because I think that overlay is with that document that you shared with the 23, 22, 22, 22 classrooms, and just that might be another thing for us to think about.
At all attendance centers.
At all attendance centers.
We can do that. That would be very easy to send out. It's already done, yeah? So, yeah, we can, but we can give you the breakdown of each attendance center and let you know what that is. That's no problem. We'll make that part of our next school board report.
I was trying to call school. I just called the street from a school, right?
So, that policy is up in March. So, are we envisioning that we'll be on that cadence, or are we envisioning that we'll be behind that cadence?
I'll have a better answer after I meet with them.
In November?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe that's a target that we shoot for. All right. Additional questions on that policy? I don't know if the Policy Committee wants to work on just making sure that's in a correct cadence with what we're doing here, too.
Next, I think. So, we haven't gotten to this one yet to take a look at, so...
Though I wonder if it needs to, or something.
How does that usually work if it's...
I don't know that.
We've pulled up policies once in a while. If it's timely and relevant, we can do that. So, Policy Subcommittee, we could put this on the table.
Yeah, and we could wait till we get our report back from the city and from Mary O'Neill. And then, we could, yeah, align the policy to kind of meet whatever we think. Yep, okay.
Board members, any additional conversation? All right. Oh, I'm looking to Wes, I think, for a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
If Board members are offended by me always asking Wes this, you can let me know. Moved by Wes, seconded by Deb. Brian, we're ready for the vote. You have to approve that. Not approved by Wes.
I don't know. That might be a no, actually, Wes.
Shows you're not done. Thank you, everyone.